October of last year, right before we all started this push to get the remaining chronically homeless veterans off the streets, was that that population had been reduced to about eighty-four at the time, fifty-six of whom were street living. And that's when City of Phoenix stepped up and you all helped us get the resources necessary to go after those final fifty-six. We did that by December twenty-third, I think, December eighteenth, I think it was. We had housed our fifty-sixth chronically homeless vet. And so the intervention applied, said, should have brought us to zero, near zero. And so the question becomes, is that the case? And so we announced that we believed we were at functional zero. Now, it didn't get announced as functional zero. It gets announced as, there's no homeless veterans ever, right? And in recognizing that homelessness is not static, right? We have to, we have to view this as a functional zero. So the one concept I really want to help people understand at this point is that reaching functional zero is like reaching full employment, okay? So it doesn't mean that everybody has a job, right? It means that the system's in balance, the supply of jobs and the demand for them is in balance. And those who don't have a job, the five percent unemployment, they're what's called frictionally unemployed. It's the search time between lining myself up with the right job, the employer finding the right person for the job, right? So that's really where our system is at for chronically homeless and street living veterans, really. And I'll give you some data on that. But systems really in balance, the percentage is very low. So when I started in this too many years ago, one out of three of our homeless were veterans, okay? That's over three times their representation of the civilian population. If we look at the recently published street and shelter data, there's about thirty-eight-hundred homeless individuals and about three-hundred-and-ten, I think it was, are veterans. So little less than ten percent now. So we have completely normalized the, you know, their representation in the homeless community. Now, we want to drive it even lower, but if we look at the street living, the street population is one-thousand-fifty-three individuals of that forty-eight identified as being a veteran on the night of the count. That's four-and-a-half percent. So we're way down on that. There were eighteen that were chronically homeless or identified as chronically homeless, which was less than one percent. So we're talking very low percentages. The second thing we look for is, okay, are they frictionally homeless? Are they getting, is this a short-term experience? Are they able to find the resources and move out? So we look at a point in time of data from the cash shelter, right? And we looked at every single veteran that was inside of there at a point in time. And out of that data, we were able to determine that the average length of stay was thirty-four days total in the shelter. Now, the median, which in this case is much more important, this is, close majority are experiencing just fourteen days of homelessness. There were two cases, two occurrences of four-and-a-half months. These were the longest stays. Chronic homelessness is defined by homelessness for a year or longer with a disabling condition, just to give you a basis of when that comes into play, right? So what it tells us is our percentages are very low. And then when we're looking at, you know, the experience, how long is that lasting? Are they matching up to resources? Because we have an imperfect supply of resources and demand for them, right? You have to have that search time, like you do in the employment system, right? So, and we can determine that, yeah, it is short-term, the experience, you know, they're being identified, they're being connected to resources, and their homelessness experience is ending in a relatively short period of time. So all of that together is how we kind of monitor and say, this is functional zero and we're there. Our big risk is we need to keep the scaled resources in place. You start to, you know, say, we don't need them anymore, or we start to, you know, kind of redirect, and then suddenly the population piles back up. Right now, system's operating very well, and all data indicates that, yeah, we are at functional zero for the street living population. We're there for female veterans, we're there for families. We are not there for all single male veterans, and that's the continued effort. But I do believe we're on track to, by the end of 2015, that we'll be there as well.
So. So I'd like to take us to the next step, which is our Veterans Court, and talk to you about the success we've had through that. And Veterans Court, of course, works with everything you've heard so far. It's part of the reason why we have the success that we do. We began in August 2012, and in the first eighteen months, we've had over six-hundred veterans participate in our court. That means six-hundred people that were already in our system that are now coming into a specialized court, being connected to the services that you've been hearing about today when they were in need for that. In those same eighteen months, we had over two-hundred veterans that have successfully completed or graduated their programs. Those programs lasted for them anywhere from six months to a year. We have had a few that have lasted longer than a year, but they've, at this point, eighteen months would have been January thirty-first, and we had over two-hundred that finished everything that was required of them. Going through the different demographics, when we're looking at it, one of the really important things we've started to see is a trend towards veterans from our latest conflicts. When we first started the stand downs, that was not the case. We saw that transition start happening at the stand downs. We are seeing that in our Veterans Court now as well. The larger number is the younger veterans. They're not necessarily homeless, but they are at risk. And so we're still connecting to resources to make sure they don't become homeless. We're also starting to see a larger percent of women come into our court and participate in the services we have to offer through the court. All of this, you know, I take a moment to recognize why this works so well. And it works so well because of what you keep hearing, and it's the great partnerships. We have the Public Defender's Office, Jim Leonard's here today. He really enhances our program. He makes personal contact with our veterans, just like most of us on the team do. Our courts, the support of Judge Sangong and Judge Griffith, working with us, participating with us. We have Todd Dahl from Veteran Affairs. We have Melvin Morris from the Department of Arizona Veteran Services to help us with benefits. We have Conswan, Sully Von Che, she is with Mercy Maricopa. She is specially assigned to our court and helps us with any mental health issues that may come up that the VA cannot help us with. And a lot of other partners that come to the table. What I want to go through now is some actual numbers, some hard numbers for you for what our veterans are doing and the impact that's having on our communities. We've had over thirty complete inpatient programs. That means they've gone through programs either in Prescott or in Phoenix where they were actually inpatient. And those programs usually were anywhere from ninety days to a hundred-and-twenty. Some have stayed longer. They've addressed, when they go inpatient, they address every issue that they face, whether it's post-traumatic stress, whether it's anxiety, depression, or physical disabilities. We've had over a hundred connected to housing. When I talk about at-risk, these are the veterans we have come in that may be sleeping on a friend's couch. They may know they're being evicted that day. And we have connections now where we can get them connected so they're not sleeping on the street that night. We have a secondary person that comes from the VA that helps focus on the homeless issue. So if that's a direct need, we connect them to that immediately. Seven of our chronically homeless veterans were housed using H3 and that program through our Veteran Court. And they were monitored through our court until they became permanently housed. And all of those veterans that were put through the H3 program are still permanently housed. We had a hundred-and-twenty as of the eighteen-month mark that were treated for post-traumatic stress. You know, those individuals always stay with us a minimum of six months and usually a year to work through their programs. We have eighteen that have had traumatic brain injuries. Some, several of these did not know they had traumatic brain injuries until they came into our program. But those of us that work collaboratively have seen what a traumatic brain injury looks like and were able to direct them in the right direction so they could get diagnosed and begin treatment for that. We have had two-hundred-and-thirty participate in substance abuse counseling, and all of that is not just through the VA. We have many community partnerships, whether it's Native American connections or taros that work with us from our community as well. And that continues to grow for the resources we have available. And we've had approximately a hundred others engaged in mental health programs, and that likewise could be through the VA or our community partners. What we found is our veterans are tremendously resilient. You know, they come in, they work well with us, they do what's asked of them, and they succeed. And we have had a tremendous number that are going back to school, that have gotten jobs, they've been housed, they've reunited with their families. It's just a tremendous court to be a part of, and I think all of our partners would agree. It's really, it really makes our communities better and safer, and it's all of our collaboration that gets us there. And that's starting to prove itself out. You know, we're not quite to the point where we can do a full recidivism study, but when I look at the stats, we're at about two percent or less right now. That's huge for a misdemeanor court. So all of this, I want to bring it back and talk about some of our recognitions through the city.
Yeah, so. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, as you can see, there's been a national recognition. The National League of Cities, in March, the President recognized the mayor and the whole community for functional zero, as we've heard the definition. Department of Veteran Affairs recognized, when they had their boots-on-the-ground press conference here in the valley, we were recognized there. The UN, United Nations, World Urban Forum recognized the specific project, H3, for its collaborative efforts. And then the Veterans Court is a finalist at the Thirty-Fifth Annual City Livability Award. That'll be announced in June in Dallas. So they're just tremendous, national recognition. We know that the mayor and the city council have stepped up and given us direction and given us the support. And so we feel really proud to have the community present the many things that are going on.
Any questions? Comments? What a great job you all are doing in working together with, and Brad, what you do with the stand-down is just incredible. If you haven't, have a chance to experience it, what a great, it's bringing all the different community organizations, lawyers, doctors, you name it. You go in there, it's a one-stop shopping for veterans and all the services, all the supports that they have. And I know that you headed it for years, and now you moved on, but that legacy lives on forever.
John and Jean.
So good luck. Well, thank you once again.
Thank you.
Now, we're going on item number fifteen, water safety. You know, for years, City of Phoenix has been very good in the prevention programs in water safety. At one time, we were probably one of the worst cities when it came to drowning, and the firefighters and the community leaders stood up and really went door-to-door knocking and educating individuals. And this last couple of months, we've been having a lot of drownings, and now it's time for us to step up and come up with a plan. And I think we have a plan, and we have that Team Phoenix approach where we're going to start saving some lives out there. So with that, I'd like to have you all present the water safety campaign.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of subcommittee. Thank you for having us here today to provide information on water safety programs and drowning prevention efforts. With me today, I'd like to introduce newly promoted Deputy Chief Shelley Jameson and Engineer Paramedic Kelly Lieberman from our Public Affairs Bureau. We thank you for this opportunity to tell you about the support that we are putting together for water safety education and the programs that we've put out into the community. Phoenix Fire has very strong relationships in place with our brothers and sisters in law enforcement and other critical city agencies as well, and we could not do this without them. They support our water safety programs. This collaborative, unified approach has resulted in great success, reaching out to these critical, with these critical lifesaving messages. Engineer Paramedic Kelly Lieberman is one of our leaders and a valued member of our Public Affairs Division in Phoenix Fire and does quite a bit of the boots-on-the-ground work. So I'm going to ask Kelly to present our PowerPoint this morning.
Thank you, Chief Jameson. Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, good morning. Well, we've got a great presentation, and I want to show you where we're at, what we're campaigning on. So, so far, twenty-one incidents this year. That's twenty-one too many. Seven of those have been fatalities. The remaining, we haven't done the research, but there's lifelong deficits. A lot of the time, the brain starts to die after four to six minutes. Without oxygenated blood, you do get lifelong deficits. So there's many issues. We're just looking at seven fatalities, but again, the rest of those incidents can be lifelong threatening. So some prevention techniques that we're looking at right now, the city collaboration, which is something that is, we've always worked together, but I think at this time, this year, 2014, we are collaborating greater than we ever had before, from experts from all over the city, and I'll get a little further into that. But the community education events that we're doing, the new materials that we've been printing, getting put together by outside agencies, media events, social media, and then some future planning that we're looking at. So as you can see here, city collaboration, adult supervision. We go by the ABCs of water safety. We have our fellow brothers and sisters from Phoenix Police Department. Sometimes they are the first on scene in some of these tragic drownings, providing CPR. But also, there's issues in which adult supervision is not being done correctly, and that is because of possible neglect or alcohol use, substance abuse, et cetera. So law enforcement does play a role in drownings. Neighborhood Services Department, again, another organization that we'll be collaborating with within the city that has resources in getting out to the community and helping to provide education. Buildings for barriers. City of Phoenix Buildings Department, which I wasn't very familiar with until I got to sit down and meet with them, but they are highly educated in pool fences, pool barriers, and again, drowning prevention. We're looking at, how tall do pool fences need to be? How, how many inches above concrete compared to gravel or grass? You start looking at all these different variables. Yes, people may have pool fences, but they're not maintained. And that brings me to our fire prevention section, and that's who does our pool abatement. So if there's temporary repairs, things that need to be fixed within the community, they're the first ones to call, get out there and solve it before harm happens. City of Phoenix Aquatics Department and Becky Hewlett, they've got a fantastic program that they are, they've got some of the best trained lifeguards and swim instructors I've ever met. I'm a huge advocate for them, and they are on the front end of helping to prevent these drownings. And of course, you have the United Phoenix Firefighters Association and providing CPR. Okay, that's a, a last resort is knowing CPR, but I feel that, not just for drownings, but cardiac arrest is one of the leading causes for adult fatalities. So again, trying to get ahead of that, getting people educated on CPR. And then again, we provide CPR awareness courses as well. Which brings me to our CAR-99 in regards to our fire prevention. We've called out on them many times for being in an apartment complex where maybe the pool is, the pool fence is definitely not up to code, it's cracked open, the latch is broken, whatever it may be, and they're able to come out there and fix it immediately. So again, I'd like to thank Grand Canyon University for providing the funds to keep that up. They are a vital, vital role in our organization. Some of the outside agencies, which again, have been wonderful in collaborating with, the Point Hilton Squaw Peak Resort, providing a pool and location to bring the community all out together and provide education awareness on drowning prevention. Safe Kids Maricopa County, again, this, that's Maricopa County. They are also worldwide, fantastic organization that provides resources, volunteers for community outreach. The Drowning Prevention Coalition of Arizona, a group of people from all over the state getting together to figure out ways to prevent drownings. And then SRP, and you'll see that they've helped provide funds for the printing of some of these door hangers and CPR videos that we're getting out into the community. This is one of our new videos, this CPR awareness, provides infant, child, and adult CPR, as well as the hands-only CPR. And there's been some confusion on, is it just hands-only? We don't have to breathe for them? But that's not the case. So all that is clarified in this video, and we're starting to campaign that and get it out into the community a little more. But, and this is also available on the phoenixfiredepartment.gov website, as well as SRP and aquatics. It's, even the Point Squaw Peak Resort put it on their website, so it's being promoted everywhere.
Now, who's that person on the CD right there?
Well, someone who cares about drowning prevention.
Good answer.
Door hanger. This was a great deal that we put together, again, with collaboration of City of Phoenix Aquatics and SRP. And this water safety checklist, it brings a lot of awareness into what we're doing. And you have the general areas about preventing drowning, but then you'll have inside. How do you prevent drownings inside? Because again, drownings aren't just happening in pools. They are one of the leading causes, but there's dog bowls, buckets, sinks, bathtubs. There's, it only takes two inches of water for that face to be submerged for a drowning to happen. So a great way to get out in the community. And we actually just did these yesterday. We were actually Monday hanging these along with the CPR videos. We're going door-to-door canvassing the neighborhood, and I'll get a little more into that. A promotion that we did, again, with City of Phoenix Aquatics, bringing them on board. What we're really trying to do is promote the swim lessons. For fifteen dollars for eight swim lessons within the City of Phoenix, I feel like our community should really take advantage of that. I'm doing everything I can, as well as the people that we work with, to get out there and promote them, get people out there, logging in online and getting these swim lessons that really help prevent the drownings. But this was a great idea for us to get these printed up. We went to the schools and handed these out, and it got the kids to create posters. They all submitted what a drowning prevention poster would look like, and then that winning school would get DBAC tickets and a printer, copy machine for their school. But also, we're promoting CPR classes and swim lessons. But the winner will be today at one of our Paradise Valley pools down on Fortieth Street and Bell. There's been a press release sent out, so we'll be doing some public education awareness there. And again, the child who won that will be provided with many great gifts. CPR lessons, we have been providing CPR lessons throughout the community. Now, you have CPR certification, and then you have CPR awareness. We had approximately five-hundred mannequins that some of you may be familiar with, that we were providing the community. And what would happen is, we would take these CPR mannequins, and we would educate people throughout the community. And then their job then was to educate six other people. And so it was a train the trainer type exercise, and really, and then we followed up with them to make sure they were teaching these people, but then they were provided these mannequins. They could keep them as long as they gave us their word and went out and provided education. So great way to really hit mass numbers and getting people educated. I've already touched on the swim lessons and stuff. Again, doing the research and really working together with all these agencies, we figured out that, yes, we need to promote these swim lessons. And not just for children, but for adults as well. The numbers are alarming, that adults that are unable to swim, and getting over that embarrassment and getting comfortable is going to be a big step in moving in the right direction for these parents. But what's going on is the, the adults need to understand that the City of Phoenix Aquatics does provide adult swim lessons. And they can do it on the weekends for private lessons, many options, but they need to get online and check it out. But again, there's, the numbers are alarming with adults, and you have people moving from all over the parts of the country to our beautiful city. And a lot of them, I guess, there's other cities that snow, and there's blizzards and cold weather, not familiar with that, but they come here, and there's pools everywhere, canals. It's an opportunity for them to learn how to swim. Multiple media events, mass communications is something that we definitely work on targeting. Done some events at the Point Squaw Peak Resort, mock drowning rescue, getting people to be aware of what drownings look like. We've done these wave walks, which we did on Monday, over at Thirty-Fifth Avenue and Bethany Home. So a wave walk is water awareness, vigilance, and education. And what that is, is we get together and we collaborate, again, with City of Phoenix Police Department, fire prevention, aquatics. We get all these agencies together, and we go and canvass the neighborhood around where the drownings happen. And there's actually, unfortunately, a seventeen-year-old female and a fourteen-year-old boy that drowned last week. And so we're out in that neighborhood canvassing, providing this education awareness. But again, media showed up, and it's a great way for us to get the message out there for people to think about this. Some of the planning that we're working on, thank you to Councilman Nowakowski for heading up our task force, the drowning prevention task force. We've all been working together, and finally, we were able to have a place to meet and discuss all these issues. And we've, we're moving in the right direction. For some of our educational classes, we're putting together a binder right now. I've mentioned the specialists from the building codes and pool and swim lessons and lifeguarding, adult supervision, the CPR, and we're taking all these extremely intelligent people with these valuable resources, and we're going to go throughout the community in each council district and put on separate classes for people that are interested. With the help of Neighborhood Services Department, they're going out and canvassing the neighborhood to get people involved, could come to the facility that we choose and get educated. This is going to be a great way for us to collaborate with all these agencies and then get out into the community, and really, again, mass communications, get the word out. Looking at doing charity fundraising, and Councilman Nowakowski's had some, some great ideas on that, as far as pool fences. A lot of them, not just getting pool fences, but repairing broken pool fences in people's backyard. Year-round pool possibilities within the City of Phoenix. Pools are only open eight to nine weeks a year in City of Phoenix. Maybe there's something we can look at in expanding to a year-round pool. Swim lessons, again, I've mentioned that already, but collaboration with local professional sports organizations. We've got some meetings coming up next week with the Arizona Diamondbacks. And again, Councilman Nowakowski has some valuable resources as well, we can all help collaborate in terms of having a solid impact. So thank you for allowing me to present that to all of you.
Any comments or questions? You know, I just really want to thank the leadership that you all show. Chief, you got some great leaders here that are willing to work with other departments. I mean, sometimes we have little turf areas, but your team has stepped up and really created Team Phoenix, reaching out to our Phoenix Police Department, reaching out to NSD, and reaching out to our Buildings Department, and the Parks and Rec, and saying, you guys, it's not just a fire issue about water safety, it's really all of our issue. And checking those fences and creating a program where you have that designated driver when you go out drinking, but they're actually creating a program calling a designated pool watcher. Because a lot of times, when you have family gatherings or birthday parties or just barbecues, that we sometimes forget to keep our eyes on the kids. So you actually, they're going to have a package with little trainings and classes for those designated pool watchers, and the whole CPR classes and all that, it's just incredible. One of the things I just really want to give you all credit on is the wave walking. I've been able to go about, I participated about five of them. And when there's a drowning in your neighborhood, it scares the heck out of all the neighborhood and all the community. And to have a firefighter or a person from the City of Phoenix knocking on the door and giving you all this information. And it's not just information for parents, but there are actually some comic books for the kids about water safety. And it, and you should just see the faces of the parents, especially the mothers that are saying, wow, I was so afraid to allow my kids to go swimming in our back, in our swimming pool that we had for years, but now that you've given us this information, this resources, thank you so much. Now, it's taken the fear away. The other thing is, how many grownups don't even know how to swim? How many parents really don't know how to swim and we're providing swimming lessons for adults? So that's something, for fifteen dollars for eight classes, I mean, we can teach an adult how to swim for fifteen dollars. That's incredible. So I just really want to thank you for the prevention. I think we're going to save a lot of lives, and thank you for making our city great.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you.
I just know the importance of it. But some of the drownings that I've noticed, that they did have fences. So I think one of the- that they did have fences. So, I think one of the dynamics is, is we get complacent, or, as adults, I guess, we get complacent, thinking that the fence is really going to protect our, our children. And somehow, they're getting through. Now, mine are very clever and very tall. And so, they have figured out actually the safety one, where I have the double one, where you have to pull and then pull up, and then you lock. And so, now I've hidden the key. But, it's really, really being due diligence and really watching those kids, even at, even at a ten-year-old or older, because it's just the safety of the house.
Yes. Mr. Chair, council members, yes, the barriers of protection, and that's where people think that a pool fence is just one barrier. And we're starting with inside the home and educating people that there's doors, there's latches that you can put up higher on the doors and windows, audible alarms, that when a door or window is opened, it goes off. And then you get out to the pool, and there is the latches, and there's audible alarms on the gate itself. And then there's in-pool sensors as well, that if someone, if a body drops in, there's the alarm that goes off inside the house. So, it's just, it's learning about multiple barriers of protection. But, again, like you said, the number one is definitely adult supervision. So, thank you.
Well, thank you.
And that whole thing about just two inches, sometimes people mop their floors, leave a bucket of water outside, and a two-year-old kid can just stick their head in there and get stuck, and can actually drown. So, those things, you don't even have to have a swimming pool. So, thank you for the education, and thank you for everything you all have done.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you for having us.
Our water safety to our Super Bowl, all right. And this will be our last item.
Members of the committee, it's a pleasure to be here this morning and appear before you. I'm presenting along with the command, the Unified Commanders of the Homeland Defense Bureau, Deputy Chief Frank Solomon, and Commander Gary Brazzi. Their team has been leading and, and facilitating the principal planning effort for this event since December. And so, what we're going to share with you today is some of those activities, how we plan to manage this event. And, and this will be the beginning of future presentations as, as we move forward. So, the Super Bowl, as you know, is a SEER-1, or Special Event Assessment Rating, one type of event. It's international. That's basically, it carries that rating and, which is the same as a presidential inauguration. So, it, it gets federal support, federal attention. It's extremely complicated and complex, and it spans multiple cities as well. So, some of the, back in 2008, when, when we got the, the original Super Bowl, the NFL was used to appointing one person, one commander in charge of the whole thing. And then all other agencies were to fall under that, that commander. Some of the principal public safety officials from the Arizona Department of Public Safety, the City of Phoenix, and the City of Glendale said, that's not how we operate. They said, we operate in unified command, and we work together. And we want to take this approach where you deal with a unified command group. The NFL was very skeptical, very skeptical. They, they hadn't seen anything like this before. They hadn't seen this kind of collaborative effort before. But they, they moved forward. And it's very interesting to note that since 2008, this, that became the model for all future Super Bowls. In fact, when they do their presentation to other cities, about nine of the slides that they use are slides that the City of Phoenix and Glendale presented to them, up for the original idea. So, that's, that validates this approach that I'm about to describe to you. There's a, a lot of history, there's a lot of experience out there that's on these groups as well, just to give you the confidence levels in, in, in this endeavor that we're, we're taking. So, in order to connect multiple agencies and, and try to harness the manpower of multiple agencies, we put together a, a structure that is consist, it consists of the Executive Committee, which is the, the fire chiefs and the police chiefs and the heads of agencies, they sit on that particular committee. And then below them, they, they have appointed members to sit on the Executive Advisory Committee. And this is actually the, the decision-making body, the, the people that have the ability to make it happen. They deal with issues, and, so the NFL sits on that, attends this meeting. The federal partners show up to this meeting, all of those leaders from the different agencies, and they steer the principal planning effort. Then we have the Core Planning Group, which I mentioned in my opening, comes out of the Homeland Defense Bureau. And it, it is represented by Scottsdale, Healey River, Glendale, Phoenix, DPS, they're all on this, they all have representatives on this Core Planning Group. And, and they are the movers and the shakers. They are the ones that keep people to task. They set the schedules, they drive the meetings, they put up, they, they made this PowerPoint. You know, they're the, they're the key. So, how do you, how do you put together enough members of bomb squads, hazardous materials teams, SWAT teams, EMS? How do you do that? Well, you do that by creating these resource work groups. And in those resource working groups, you will find, they, they'll elect a chair, and that chair will, will start to drive the meetings. But they put together all of the resources that they need in their particular area of expertise. So, air support, for example, down there in that lower left, that's all the helicopters, all, all of those kinds of things that, that we're going to need to be able to provide support for that. They're meeting, and they're collecting and putting together all those resources. The hazardous materials teams are meeting, they're, they're paired with the FBI hazardous materials teams. And it really creates coordination, it creates relationships, far, far out in advance of the actual ten days. So, we're looking at about ten to twelve days of operational periods with the Pro Bowl starting the Sunday before, and then the Super Bowl on, on the Sunday following, and all the events in between. And, and so, this is where we're going to draw our resource pool from. And this is not agency-specific. So, it really allows us to leverage everybody. And we have, believe me, everybody. All of the, all of the cities have, leaders have ponied up and said, we'll participate. Whether you have, whether they have a, an event in their city or not, they're willing to participate. So, this is a great opportunity for us to, to really get the, the experts in, in their field, and, and bring them to bear on this particular event. So, now you have to control the position and the function of all of those people from, from the beginning to the end, every day, day in and day out, all the different venues, all the different movements. So, we'll put together geographical incident management teams. So, Glendale will have an incident management team, Phoenix will have an incident management team, Healey River, Scottsdale, those will all be managing their piece of the pie, so to speak. And the challenge for us is being able to maintain situational awareness, maintain communication across those lines. And so, what we put together that, that overarches all of that and oversees all of that is a multi-agency coordinating center, or a MAC. And that's where we can put federal partners together, we can put representatives from each one of those management teams together, we can share intelligence, we can react to an event by directing resources to where that event needs to be. Those are, those, that gives us the advantage of, of everything just in time, from something that the NFL may want, to something that we see we need to do. And that's really why the NFL really likes this system, is because it is very responsive. They ask for something, we have the ability to push that information down through the system and cause a response. So, that, they're very, you know, they're very receptive to this idea. What does it look like? I'll go through these real quick. This is a standard National Incident Management System chart. This is common operating for all of us. So, every single, as, as we go through these, you'll see that every jurisdiction uses the same org chart. And then we'll go to the City of Phoenix org chart. So, now, how do you control, or manage, or facilitate all of those independent operations? And my next slide will kind of show you, demonstrate in a visual way, how you take all four of those and, wait for it, merge them into... Yeah, I'm telling you, they're a good planning group. Yeah, yeah. So, and that, and that's how, that's how we coordinate on a, on a large scale, how we're going to do this. So, I think that, that you can take a lot of confidence in the fact that this isn't our first rodeo, and that we, we have some great people. We, we are a responsive group. And, and with that, I will now turn it over to Commander Brazzi, who will basically describe a lot of the intelligence and, and things that is, that is required to do this.
There we go. Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee. Just to add what Kevin said, he's, he's mentioned some language stuff there, incident management team, multi-agency coordinating committee, and some other stuff. That's all part of the National Incident Management System, which is NIMS. So, what that means to us is, because this is multi-jurisdictional, that we're all speaking the same language. This was something that, a unified command process that was established during post-9/11. So, when you have large incidents like this, or large incidents, and you have all these agencies working together, we're all talking to each other on, on the same level. And we understand each other because of that common language. So, I just wanted to throw that in. Also, you may already be aware, the, Mr. Zork, the city manager, has already established a working group for City Hall that will all tie into this as well. There's a number of sub-working groups there as well. So, we, you know, the right hand knows what the left hand's doing, we're trying to connect the dots. And some of the subcommittees might be public safety, clean zone, the zoning committee, and those kinds of things. So, that's forthcoming, that we're all participating in as well. I want to talk a little bit about the ACTIC, and that's otherwise known as our Arizona Counterterrorism Information Center. And I won't presume to know what you know about it, so I'll just make a few comments about what that is. It is a fusion center. There's fusion centers all across the country. At last count, I believe, there's about seventy-seven of those. And essentially, its function is to fuse together multiple agencies at the federal, state, and local level. So, at the ACTIC, we have thirty-some agencies that participate there. It also houses our Homeland Defense Bureau, so we have a, a pretty significant presence at the ACTIC. It was established, again, as an effort to combat terrorism during post-9/11. Ours in particular was established in 2004, so it's been in operation for ten years. And I could say also that since that time, this fusion center's become all hazards, all crimes. So, it's not just specific to counterterrorism efforts. All hazards, all crimes, and it'll support, you know, large incidents and large events like the Super Bowl. So, I just want to give you a little bit of background about some of its capabilities that will be leveraged with the ACTIC. And you can see at the bottom of the slide there, those are some of the things, computer forensics detail, facial recognition. That's where our intelligence unit resides. We have an Intelligence Action Center that resides there as well. Our TLO program, Terrorism Liaison Officer, again, like the ACTIC, the name doesn't quite represent the scope of work that they do. It's not just terrorism. They are also all hazards and all crimes. And what these are specialized detectives that support major incidents and major scenes. So, they'll be, you know, a part of our resources that we'll be able to bring to bear to support the Super Bowl. And what they do is have a, a number of special tools in the toolbox that they can provide scene support to, that the rest of us don't have. Global imaging and mapping capabilities, and the Threat Mitigation Unit. Those guys are the ones that are actively involved in protecting critical infrastructure and key resource. And they're also known for deploying their camera system, their camera security system at major events as well. So, as Kevin mentioned upfront, the Super Bowl has the highest ranking as a Special Event Assessment Rating. It's the largest event in the world, and there's a thousand moving parts to it. And because of that, all of the assets and resources that the ACTIC has to offer will be leveraged to support the Super Bowl. And that's about it.
Nice and simple, right?
Did I say it was still morning?
Any comments?
Yes. Councilman Nowakowski and I both represent the area that will be included in the Super Bowl Experience. And I also have the pleasure of representing the city on the Downtown Phoenix Partnership. So, we've begun to have conversations about the security perimeter and some of the restrictions that downtown businesses and residents should be aware of. But could you speak a little bit more about how secure that area would, would be? I'm thinking of the Boston Marathon and the additional restrictions there as a, a potential guidepost, where it's really, you're bringing in as little as possible, and you're maybe going to be asking some of the downtown businesses to have different operations during, or perhaps no operations during that time period?
You know, and, and I meant to mention, we're, it's a work in progress right now for all of the events and all the venues that are going to be in the downtown area. And, you know, the City of Phoenix has most of them. This is multi-jurisdictional. Some will be out in Scottsdale. There's a game and some other activities that will occur at the stadium. But throughout that two-week period, beginning with the Pro Bowl, the second week with the Super Bowl, there's going to be a significant number of events in the downtown area. We expect all of those to be finalized. We're being told by the end of this month. So, as you're aware, some of those events that we already know are NFL Central, and that is going to encompass a twelve-block radius in the downtown area. And right now, what we're doing is working in the process of building operations plans that would be plugged into our incident management team. So, the incident management team will manage, you know, overall manage all of those activities that are going on in the downtown area. But the reason that we do operations plan is so that we don't leave anything out. We make sure that there's a thorough security plan that is implemented to protect all of those folks in the downtown area while that event is going on. So, you know, be rest assured that that's a work in progress, that we're getting out in front of now, so that we have a pretty robust plan moving forward as we grow closer to the Super Bowl. So, there, there's going to be venue managers for NFL Central, the Downtown Operations Unit will be involved in that. There's going to be the NFL Experience that's going to be at the Convention Center, and that, that event, or that, that venue will be separately managed. It'll all be managed together, but they'll have their own staff of officers and other people that will be managing that event as well. So, as you, just trying to give you an idea that it's going to be very robust, very enhanced security operations. And, you know, our, our goal is to have the safest events as, as we possibly can.
Please let us know if our office can be helpful in communicating to the downtown community what...
Absolutely. And as we move forward, and we come back to this subcommittee, we'll be providing you with more information on that as we move along.
Great comments. Any, any other comments?
Can we have a copy of the PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Now, I, I've got lots of questions about the Super Bowl. Communities are already excited, ready to go. And they just know we're going to make all this money. And I keep asking the city manager, do you keep track of how many hours you put in on this? Because I'd really like to figure out how much it costs us, what the net is. And we've got so many people involved. I know it would be a huge challenge, but I think it's, you guys can take on any challenge, I know. You're great.
Yeah. One of the things that we've done... One of the things that we've done is to leverage our Professional Standards Bureau. There's an audit team over there that's actually tasked with tracking that kind of stuff that you're talking about. So, it'll be staffing, staffing hours, you know, on-duty resources that we use, how much overtime that we spend, and all those moving parts to how expensive this is going to be. And they're going to provide an after-action report.
But I don't want it just for PD, I want it for anybody from the city that's involved.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in the NIMS format, there is a finance component to it, that's a very robust component to the NIMS, that is tasked with absolutely that. That is the number-one responsibility of that section, is to track all finances of this, of the joint operation and what we're doing here for Super Bowl.
And I fully realize that having a Super Bowl in the city is not only an honor, but it is worldwide recognition. It's marketing that you couldn't buy, we could never afford to buy. So, that has to be calculated. But I keep getting the comments, and I thought, "Well, it's time to ask the hard questions." But thank you very much.
One thing I will say is, in terms of events, from the Pro Bowl to the Open, to the Super Bowl, every single day, there'll be hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people with things to do.
Yes, I'm sure.
We'll keep them busy and hopefully spend a lot of money, right?
Yep.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is future agenda items. And we're passing around a sheet with all the future agenda items on there. Is there anything else that you would like to add on this sheet?
I actually would like to add, would like to know, understand the situation that was brought up last Wednesday, was it Wednesday? Regarding police officers not being able to work out during their lunchtime, or just understand the situation and what the dynamics of that is, what that's about.
Okay, so, workout during, during their lunch periods or...
Yeah, or have the ability to do it during their lunch break.
Okay.
If they wanted to.
Perfect. Anything else?
And then I noticed that the ethics is coming up in June.
Correct.
Okay. Will that be a work session? And I don't know if the city's ever...
What we normally do is they bring it here to our subcommittee. They present it to us, and if you'd like to, we can ask the mayor to put on one of our policy, or create a work session on it.
Okay, because I really think that the meats and bones is there. It's just now hammering out what is it that I guess we would work on and then present to our colleagues. And so, I would, I don't know if it would be a policy session, a work session, study session, I don't know what you would call it.
I think what we can do is, my recommendation would be, let's listen to the report and have that discussion, and at that time, we can make some recommendations on if it should be a work.
Okay. Or we could do it then, I guess.
That'd be great. But at least staff knows what you're thinking, and they can kind of address those issues. Anything?
Yes, I would like to have the police go through and look at all the current programs that they do. And I know we received a huge binder with programs this spring. And in particular, the one I noticed was the great program. So, I use it as example, but I don't want it limited to that. To look at if there's a way we could suspend some of those programs the next school year and put those officers out in the field. Because I think it's very important we get the extra manpower out there. And there are so many programs in the schools. We've been doing some of them 20, 25 years. I don't know if they're still effective, but they're still needed in the school, because the schools have implemented a lot of programs. But I'd really like to have somebody review that and see if there's a way we can come up with some extra police officers to put out.
And with that, I'd like to find out if there's shared revenue there, if the school districts are actually putting in half the, half the funding or not. So, if we can figure that out, if there's any shared revenue, if not, then I think it would be an easy...
I don't want to touch school resource officers, I wouldn't make that claim, because I think they play a super important role in campus.
You're talking about the program.
Programs.
Like the DARE program and...
Great program and some of those extras that we do.
Okay.
Anything else? If there's anything, I mean, just contact me, we'll just put it on the agenda.
Right.
With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you.[1783.21][1783.21][applause]